The United States. And through the Republic. Yes. One day. Under God. It is all with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, next thing on the agenda is two of the minutes from the April fifth meeting. Long time ago.
Meeting before last.
I thought they were good.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from the April fifth meeting.
For second.
And so, uh, Ken has made a motion and Chris has seconded it to approve the minutes from the April fifth meeting, all those in favor. And next, um. Oh, of the, uh, department reports.
You're right, Dan.
Oh, I am, alright. Uh, good evening. We fared better than other towns around us as far as washouts. Overwards and other things, but that side was some amount of damage. We made some progress Monday and Tuesday with the weather cooperating. It's rained today, tonight and tomorrow was, it stopped us though, it's saturating the ground too much, we can't dig, we can't grade, we can't. Uh, reset much of anything because it just turns to mud as soon as we touch it. We have to replace the complete cross culvert on Prescott Hill Road. I do that today, but. There was just too much water flow after the rain last night, so we put it to next week, and at this point. With this steady rain all today, we'll strike through tonight, half the night, it looks like we'll just have to wait until next Monday to. Try again on fixing everything that we haven't got to yet.
Which side of Prescott Hill?
It's right near Frederickson's Tree Farm, about a quarter mile up from Cobbsey Road. It washed the side of the road. Down to the culvert, it's down at least ten feet, if not fourteen total. The interesting thing is that it's been repaired and something was done to it in the past because the culvert is half metal and half concrete. Um, which. I'm not even gonna. Speculate why that was not fixed appropriately when it was dealt with, uh, so for us, it means a complete cover replacement. Uh, and where it's down so deep, we have to hire a excavation company with a bigger excavator that can get down that deep, so. Probably next Tuesday is my guess at this point to do that, the road's not. Completely compromised, which is nice, the road's still open for traffic, one lane, lane and a half roughly, it's, it's safe, it's not gonna collapse unless we get more flooding rain. Um, but it does have to be completely replaced. Other areas fared. Uh, pretty well, um, a lot of the larger culverts that had beaver activity. Fared well and are flowing well thankfully, um. Wilson Pond Road, the dual culvert just passed North Fire Station. Were a, a big concern Monday, but thankfully, water. It handled the water and it went down, um, it washed the shoulders fairly well through there, we've done some restoration work, but we'll have to wait for more. And, uh. Justin went around town with me yesterday afternoon, looked at some of the damage, some of the repairs we've made. While we were doing that, four, we were checking the Beaver Brook Culvert, um, which had held up until. Yesterday morning, midday, um, but when they went over to attempt to do some small repair to. The depression, it actually. Broke through and discovered that it's basically been washed completely underneath, um. So. Uh, and the water is flowing through. The, the bedrock again. Of the road. Separate from the culvert, like it did before when. The dam was still in place over at the campground, so. At this point, the water is so high over there, it's a wait and see as to how bad it gets and what we can or cannot do with it. We discussed, Justin and I discussed pros and cons of potentially doing an emergency culvert repair. Is what we'd held off from doing because the culvert's not adequate period for the system for the area. But. Just the culverts, you'd be spending ten to twelve thousand dollars just in the five foot culverts, let alone. A large excavator, all the material, the time, we'd probably be in the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range. And still have a, a road that's compromised because when the water gets up, it flows through the road at the bottom. Will it hold for ten years, twenty years, who knows, will it hold for? Ten days, it's, it's. It's not a permanent fix to replace what's there, which is why we've gone as far as we've gone with the big box culvert. So we're just in a complete holding pattern, wait and see. Information I got this afternoon, as we were back over today, checking on it, making sure things are still somewhat stable, uh, the general manager of the Get Brown come out and spoke to the two guys that were there. And it's a different manager than it was before, it used to be a Jeremy Callahan.
He was very pleasant.
This gentleman, I, I don't know his name, uh, but I believe he's taken Jeremy's place. He stated, he saw the damage to the road and he stated that he spoke to his. Paint and command. And they are going to start seriously investigating, opening up the secondary access that comes. In from Leeds, further down the Ward Road or whatever that road is named in Leeds. Uh, as, as a, uh, backup plan and. They, they definitely need to investigate that, uh, because. This point, we're gonna, we're in a wait and see pattern with that, but it's, it's. There's a lot of delivery trucks that go down that road, big box trucks, twenty-six thousand pound trucks and. If, if that's compromised more than it is already. They, they will have issues and, and you know.
And that could be useful, just, just if we get to do the. The big box culvert, because then we could actually close the road, we wouldn't have to work around their schedule, you know, if, if they had a secondary.
Right.
We could close it for a week and do it.
Right, I mean.
Exactly.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the road will have to be closed for the, for the eventual installation, no matter what. So that they would need a secondary access to play, because we're not gonna put a temporary bridge in, um, but. They're seeing the urgency. Finally, of having a secondary access to the campground because they may lose their primary, so. It's wait and see, um, it's a, it's. It's a stressful situation, that's no fun, I don't wanna lose the road, I don't wanna have a truck go through, a camper go through. But if we spend twenty, twenty-five thousand to make it. You know. Safely passable for now, we're gonna be tearing it out. Put in the appropriate culvert because the repair just is not gonna be adequate, which is what brought us here anyways. Rest of the town, a lot of washes, side washes, um. Culverts, some were bugged, they're still plugged, um. We're making a list, we're tackling the, the heavy stuff and going from there. Most of the gravel roads actually fared better than we thought they would, um, which is just. A nice positive out of it, um, but. It'll be, it's. Obviously totally killed my May schedule, anything I had planned for me is, is now pushed to June because. This whole week is spent dealing with this. Most of next week and, and the week after lingering, you know, it's just. Pushed everything back that I was gonna do for. Shoulders, paving, road prep, um, ditching and any other projects, so obviously, uh, I did work on everything. I'm keeping a. List of every. Man hour, material. Um, equipment usage or anything we're doing for repairs from the storm. So that if there is. Emergency funding made available to cover the repairs, we've documented and Justin can apply for it. So. Hopefully, we will. Get some reimbursement, build a Florida disaster area and we'll get some reimbursement money down the road, but. Otherwise, it takes my already stretched budget well over its breaking point.
How did Cressy Road fare with all the work that we, you put in there last year?
It fared very well.
Well, that's a good.
Um, it fared very well.
Yeah.
So. Thankfully. That road still has a lot of ditching work that needs to be done, but. It held well, um, painter road held. Lake road held. Lower Carver, um. flooded completely over in the flat stretch, once you get past that first house, but. By Tuesday morning, the road was completely, um, uncovered again and there was no damage, didn't lose the culvert, cross culvert or anything, that's. Kind of shocking. Like I say, on the gravel roads, we, we, we lucked out, we, we had more damage to the, to the paved roads than we did the gravel.
What's your assessment at, at Wagon Bridge, did I see an engineer or someone down there?
DOT has closed the bridge, uh, we made the repairs to our culvert and half the road that washed, but. D O P, DOT closed the bridge because the water is over the support beams and they cannot reopen it until the waters blow this, the beams. I happened to meet up with them by chance this morning, I was. Doing a ride around the road at six thirty, they happened to show up at the same time, so I just talked to the engineer for a minute. He said they'll be closed until the water goes down below the beams and they can expect inspected. The other concern they had, and I noticed it, he, he brought it up, was that. The asphalt top, um. Much more alligator cracks than it was. And they're concerned that. That that base has been compromised with the waterfall because it was completely over the bridge for a while. I'm trying to be dramatic, I hope that when the water's down and they inspect it, that it can go back to being open, but they. Seem to have some legitimate concerns about the, the structural safety of that bridge and, and the, uh. Once the water's down, they'll know more. I hope it's not a long-term closure.
Is that on the list for this year, was that this year's project or?
It's on DOT's list, but it doesn't look like it's till twenty twenty-four.
Maybe it's twenty-four.
Possibly twenty-five, but I think it's twenty-four.
You're supposed to have one more public hearing. On that, once they have a preliminary design.
Oh yeah, so DOT closes, so the road itself could be open, I've made my repairs to the shoulders, to the culvert, but DOT has closed the bridge. Nobody. The, go out every couple hours just to help out DOT, uh, and they, as they said, they check it when they can, but people are moving the barricades, just driving through. People moved our barricades when one thirty-two was closed, when we had other roads closed, uh, we had Bay Cumber closed. Every barricade we came back to was pushed off to the side, people were just driving through, uh, so. The, the, the general public out there has no respect for the barricades or anything and they're moving them constantly, so. There's just nothing we can do about it. So. I guess it's just a product of the environment we live in, but, uh, DOT has closed the bridge until further.
On, on a, an unrelated topic, um. How much prep work is there to be done at the beach for this new playground? Is it a major project or is it a day or two project to prep for that or?
I don't have in-depth plans of what's needed to be done, I have a. I have a couple lines. From the playground company of what they're looking for. I'm gonna block out a week, a whole week for it, a whole four days. Because I have to. Again, I don't have concrete proof, I believe I have to remove the existing swing set that's there, then I have to. Excavate out. Level, um. Prep for them. I'm unclear if I have to. Find the. Basing. The padded basing or the wood chips or whatever it is, I don't even know exactly what it is, it has a, a name that I didn't recognize. I'm unclear if I have to find that, source it and install it, or if that's done by the playground company because. That's not. Sitting on my property with the other playground equipment they brought in. So, uh. A lot of unknowns for me, um. But I'm, you know, I'm just gonna block out the entire week. And, you know, I have a crew of five and I'll have to have a minimum of three. On that job, so it really limits what I'm gonna do. And I, I still don't have concrete. Guidance on what I need to do.
Yeah, Lisa had called me about repairing a couple of the white guard stands and they got damaged. Um, and she mentioned that, it was a big concern that. She didn't know what kind of timeframe she thought you had said fall before you would have time to do anything and. Didn't know if there may be an, uh, alternative route to get the work done or?
Well, I mean, up until. Either, it was either early last week or. Mid to late week before, I had no guidance on what was supposed to be done or where.
Yep.
So I've only had preliminary. Uh, narrative on what needs to be done in my hand for about a week to a week and a half, so. I couldn't plan for it, I had no idea. What or where needed to be done.
Yep.
So, and looking at. Everything I need to get done this year, but I want to, um. I. Looked at my schedule and even before this. Monsoon, I'll call it, was, was looking at, you know, I'll do it in the fall because there's no way I'll get in there before the swim program starts. Uh, and the beach is crowded and. There's no way I can be over there. During the day when there's swim program going on, that, in and out excavator running and. This, this, that's, I have to close the beach off. For viability sake. Um, so I. Wanted to push it to fall. I. But I, I'm hearing that I may not be able to. So I will bump. Other things. That then keep getting bumped, so, um.
Do you have a committee that worked on that or something?
The rec committee are the ones that got the playground going.
Yep.
So our biggest concern is that our warranty will end before the playground gets put in, so if we are missing something, if something is broken, then our warranty is done. And it's on us to replace it. So that's our biggest thing because we've already been, we, we've had, we got it. In November, right, we were supposed to get it in June, then we were supposed to get it in July, right, because it was a manufacturer piece that we were missing from month to month to month, right? So we probably got it in November, but that's when our. Warranty has started, I believe it was two weeks before, Joe has the exact date. Um, that we actually received it, so we. If we put it in in the fall, in October, right, September, October, we don't. We got less than.
It's a one, one-year warranty on.
From the time we received it, yep. And that's, and that's our biggest concern and. Just like us, right, we're, we're bugging you guys, right? We also have the townspeople who petitioned for this, who voted for this playground, calling us constantly, are we gonna have it, are we gonna have it, are we gonna have it? So we've been getting that constant now for about two weeks since Lisa. Put out the swim program schedules, we've been getting at the playground, what about the playground, what about the playground, so now it's like. It's, it comes down, right, it trickles down from the townspeople to us now, now we're coming here to make sure that. We can get this installed because it was such a big ordeal for us to get this playground.
So is that your understanding that it? I, I can't imagine that the warranty starts when they deliver it in boxes as opposed to.
I can certainly ask Eric, I don't.
As opposed to when it's installed.
Even asked him this question.
Because that doesn't make sense to me.
No.
And it doesn't make sense that the warranty starts when it's in a box.
Was there any funding budgeted for prep work? For this or just raised enough funding to buy the equipment?
So that was really fresh, who, um, did all of that piece, so I'm not really sure, I tried to go to her house to find the notebooks to get all of her notes on it. Unfortunately, she's not here with us anymore, so, um. That information. I don't know if Lori's got that at the town office or maybe Justin knows, but unfortunately, I. Yeah, she's been on the rec committee for twenty-four years, there's a stock in notebooks like this, uh. It could take me a month to try to figure out which notebook that was in, so.
My recollection of that is the money that went out on the warrant. For the playground was for the playground.
Equipment.
Equipment, exactly, because. The town was going to hand.
Yeah, if you, if you kind of read the way the R P was written, it was, it was for the playground equipment and the installation of the playground equipment, the groundwork was to be done by the town crew.
Exactly.
So the company will build it. He's, he kind of indicated that, you know, uh, loosely in that email to Dan that the earliest they would be able to get out here would be sometime in June. Uh, but they're gonna come out and it's, you know, actually built the thing, but the groundwork, the, the way the R P was written was, it was on the town.
The removing of the old swing set.
Yeah.
So.
And what just complicates it for me unfortunately is that I wasn't here when this whole thing was discussed and, and done, I was not a part of it. Town at that point, so I, I, and Justin wasn't here either, so.
Yeah.
It's. It's hard to know what the intent was, um. And, uh. I don't wanna have to do it twice, I don't, and. I, I just, I want some. I wanna make sure I get it right the first time. None of us can afford to do it twice, but I'll, you know. I won't let that be wrong either, so. It's, I just don't have any institutional knowledge of what. The actual thing was, other than it was passed to me when I took over that. The Public Works Crew is gonna do the groundwork for the playground, and but. And again, I had nothing on paper, any specific information until about a week and a half ago, and that information is, is.
Basically.
Yeah, so I think the main things we need to clarify with him is. You know, the spec of what needs to be presented to him to do the installation.
When Lisa's walking right now, she might have more information.
And also clarify the warranty, because it doesn't make sense to me that.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's the one who installed this one too, I, I think he's done pretty much all the ones that are in town here.
Exactly.
And, uh. He seems like a nice enough guy to deal with these very pleasant.
Yeah, so I think that's something to find that out.
There might, yeah, there must be some kind of a blueprint or plan as to where things go and then someone must know what the prep work.
Yeah.
The gentleman, I don't know his name, he, he, in his response, he gave me the dimensions and depth of excavation.
Yep.
That's a belly, and, and that's right, but, you know, I don't wanna get, I gotta dig safe, but I don't wanna get down there and find out that I. You know, I'm not putting it where it needs to be and. You know, there's just a, I just gotta. I need to be, I need to have a little more information than I have to start digging, that's all, I just wanna make sure I've dotted the i's and crossed the t's. Before I call dig safe and, and then block out a week to do it, so.
The, the company will come and mark out where, where exactly you have to dig?
No.
No?
He's, just gave me dimensions. My understanding, through nothing official, is that it's going to go where the existing swing set is now.
I can certainly ask him to come out, I've, I, I, I've heard. From, uh, the previous Public Works Director who installed it with him up here, that he was very hands-on, I can, I can call him and see if he can come up. Give us some more direct guidance about what he needs, that shouldn't, he's only in Brunswick, so it's not.
Yeah.
It's not like he's coming from, you know, Ohio or something.
I'm not trying to complicate this, but my other question that I haven't had time to ask is I'm. Digging within a hundred feet of the lake. What other issues, what other? Do I have to put up a silt fence and dig it down so nothing washes to the lake, this is. And I'm not trying to complicate it, but if I start digging and I don't have the proper stuff and somebody. Gets a you-know-what across a you-know-what, then I've got a whole bunch of problems, so I just. It's, it's, it's just not dragging the excavator over and start digging, there's, there's. Information that needs to be accurate.
Cobbsey watershed would probably.
I, I.
Or, and code enforcement.
Yeah, you know, and I, I plan on, on speaking to them, but, um. Just the time hasn't presented itself, since I've had preliminary information of where it's going.
It was, well, I was, I. The, uh, hot topping company that's gonna do all the roads. Is planning to show up in late this month or early?
It was tentatively scheduled for the twenty-second of this month, May, um, I can only assume, I have not spoken to him yet, that with the. Statewide disaster and water that I won't see him until probably the first of June. Uh, just because projects he already had scheduled are now completely delayed, and I'm sure he will be having to. Do some emergency paving stuff for. Whoever and whatever town you wanna pick, um, that will bump it. Bump me down the list as well.
Right.
Um, and for the next two weeks, I won't be doing any. Silver prep for the roads are gonna be paved because I'll be. Continuing to fix culverts and washouts around the town. Uh, up until then.
Well, this, this is all gonna complicate. What you have planned for.
Yeah, it's just.
Couple months.
Yes, it puts me behind, there's. It's just, I'm behind anyway, there's just so much to be done and. And, and it just is what it is. This. There's no way to do anything about the storm and the rain that we got, but it just, it's. This backs me up, but two weeks at this point, minimum, we'll see, they're pushing me back for.
All right, well, I think we have some directive on what we need to go with that. The unknowns that need to be known, so.
Uh, something that's, not, not, but something that's, uh. The state. I think should be taken care of is near. Uh.
Hughes House.
Hughes House on one thirty-two. When you go, go by, uh, Academy Road where it goes up. There's a huge washout there.
Yeah.
And, and it seems like. Somebody happened to go a little over too far, they.
It was caused by my pile truck. But, yes, it's. It's their, their road to fix. And they have other, now with the storm, they have other areas on one thirty-five and Cobbsey that. Are washed similarly.
It's all over the place, and that was in winter of today and there.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I caused that mess with, with a pile truck, you know, my, my crew, but. You know, it, it.
That ditching is, is the least of their worries right now, I can tell you, they got roads throughout, they're, they're split right down the middle with your car could fall into it, I mean, they're, they're gonna be a while, I'd have before they're. Who'd be concerned about the ditches?
I, I will say, I, I. Time escapes me, so it was either last week or late week before I said. When I'm crew members out with the loader down to. Touch up the edges of Academy as you get down to Main Street because that was a mess as well, I just try and. Level it out and please go out onto one thirty-two and pull that back. But I. Time of day, he was there, the traffic was heavy, it's the hill, I didn't send anybody with him, I didn't have anybody, and he came back and he said, I did this and this, but I, he goes, I couldn't get one thirty-two because of the traffic. I said, well. We tried. But it's, it's, it is the state's issue, even though I created it.
Somebody spoke to my wife about going to the field that we all made, they were like, yeah, whatever you gotta do. And I don't know if it's both or whatever, but. It's, somebody said, can we work out on the field if we need to go on that suddenly, by all means, do whatever you gotta do.
So I can only assume it's DOT.
They're one of the good guys, I don't know if somebody approached her, I don't know.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be doing anything on one thirty-two, so.
Must have been standing.
And in all honesty, if, it would be me approaching or Tyler, so, and, and neither one of us have, so. Nothing against DOT, but they do not tell me what they're doing or when, I find out when everybody else does, and, and. I can understand that because they have their list, I've got mine, it is what it is.
Pretty hands up, oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. You made it just in time. We went to our house, something?
After that, I was, and you don't even wanna know what I was.
Alright. Never mind.
Well, we just got done doing a search for it, we took a bad guy off the street, selling. Crack cocaine and fentanyl, went up and he made it to the toilet and flushed, we had to go down into the basement and pull it. All the BBC apart and flushing toilet and get all the dope to flush out. So that's why, that's why I look the way I do and I pull this.
Very glamorous, glamorous job.
You've got, your tie's still tied, so.
Still lowly.
Yeah.
You're the best, glassy soul. You're the best dressed plumber I've seen all day.
Well, I didn't feel like a few minutes. Alright, April. We had three hundred and eleven calls for service. Ended up with, um, one OUI arrest, um, guy doing donuts in Smith's Fields and. Having a good time, even event going to deal for OUI. Um, had an arrest on a warrant. And then arrest for operating after. And then arrest for operating after suspension, I was in a high-speed chase that Olivia got, got in and turned into a. One-hour standoff down on San Sanborn Road, um, but he's, he's in jail, um. Period of charges, he was actually uh. On probation for vehicular manslaughter and OUI, so a dangerous guy that, another one we got off the streets. Um. Brought to your attention last time, we're here, the uh wiring harness in Kirk's car and. They uh, they assumed that's what it failed, they did replace it to the tune of twenty-eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, and since that was replaced, we haven't had any other issues with the car. Um. Bear Cruiser, um, Reserve Cruiser, the uh. Controller for the lights with that on it, been intermittent for about. Two months and we just made it work and finally. Went down the tubes yesterday, so we had to order a new one for the two to seven, seven hundred dollars, which is a real good deal, but it was a. Uh, we found it up at a store up in Rumford, um, that sets cruisers up. They had it since two thousand sixteen, so it's new old thought, so we got a deal on it, about half price. And top things off, we got the individuals that were involved in all the commercial burglaries, um, in the area, it's two, I think the. Final total was between forty-five and fifty altogether, um, in Auburn, in the Skoggin. Everybody working um together, they were able to uh. Enough information, did a search warrant on the house. Caught them uh coming out of Breton's Market, Littlemore Falls the other night, and forty-five hundred dollars cash on them, we didn't want them. Um, anyway, they're, they're sitting in county jail down the under Skoggin. Plan going forward is for the. And the Skoggin County DA's office is going to be handling a global indictment on all of them, and what that means is that. Every, every uh jurisdiction that has burglary that we can relate to these guys is gonna be sent to the Andes Goggin. And they're gonna indict them all into one package, so they don't fall through the cracks here, there and everywhere, so. Uh, that was good of them to, and to take that on and and do that, it's a lot of work and uh. Uh, it will reassure that they will be held accountable for all of them that we've proven.
How many individuals were involved?
Great. That's where we're at, that was the month of April, and hopefully. This month slows down. Any questions?
It's only the third.
I know, and here I am. A mess.
Did you get the drugs out of the pipe?
We did.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, we got about uh twelve grams of crack cocaine and fentanyl.
Thank you, are you serving a street in Little?
Yes.
You got some?
I had the wrong hat on tonight, didn't want.
Are you fraught and tired?
He did.
But is he still there, how are you?
He is still there, he is, he is burning up his, his comp time, his sick time and his vacation time is official. Departure date is September first. Got a lot of time to burn. Thirty-seven years ago, and you're in default.
This is impossible.
I mean, that's great.
It does. Well, I know, I think he's young, you and me, they were just little boys.
Old lady.
I.
Um. I don't think I have anything.
What what you put on our, when you give us a weekly, our bi-weekly report, that stuff about all the, that Dan. The the crew is doing, that was great.
Yeah, I asked, Dan provides me with that on every Friday so that I have a better idea about what, what his activities were, I thought you'd like to kinda know where the crew is and what they're doing, so, yeah, I'll, I'll keep including that in there. Yep.
I'm gonna put it in my. Like.
Okay, yeah.
People know what.
The rains have had that a lot of the cleanup is washed down into the, on Main Street.
Yes.
Washed into the gutters, so.
Catchphrase.
Yeah.
Look at the states.
Yeah. They got most of the sand that was out there.
Is work still going on on the tax choir?
Yes. Right now, we're just in a waiting pattern, I don't, I don't have really any more that I feel like I can bring to you, the, the files are just not complete. We'll have to wait until we catch up, I mean, I have them, they're all in a pile, but they're just not. They're not complete, I don't have.
Not actionable.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have all the things, there may be one or two in there. Um. But when Dolores doesn't have anything to do, she, she, she goes through the piles of like the green cards and tries to put them where they belong, so some of them might wash out, might be ready for you, but they're just not.
They wash out.
So we must, we must be coming close to sixty days on.
Yeah, so I anticipate probably the end of May, I'll bring the ones that have not been paid, and then we can, we can put them out at that point, I think.
And how many do we have, refresh my memory, that are still pending that have not been paid?
Right now, I think there are about six. Based on the ones you added to the list from last time.
Also notable is the Supreme Court has accepted a case on exactly that body of law with regard to municipalities and claiming.
They not only accepted it, it looks like it's gonna go down in flames, so we may wanna talk to. Our legal counsel before we do anything. It's, it it seemed that at the oral arguments that there's definite majority that feel that this practice is not right.
And so uh. I'm not sure when that. Decision is scheduled to be made, but it normally takes a month or two.
Yeah.
Um.
Are you talking about the law court?
Supreme Court, US.
US Supreme Court has, has accepted a case and then. Just judging from the questioning, the way the justices were asking questions, you can sort of. Get a feel for which way the wind is blowing, and there were a number of judges that seemed pretty skeptical of. Uh. The ability of a municipality to. Profit from the sale of a property above and beyond whatever the back taxes are.
Which that wasn't our, we didn't want to.
Right, no, but like in many, in many other jurisdictions. That don't, like the eleven, I think there's eleven states that do it the way that we do it here in Maine, mostly northern states. Most of them process the stuff internally the way it is, and Maine law has another way to do this, we could just sell our interest in these liens to third-party debt collectors and they could go after them. Which I suspect is what will happen in, in this state, if that law goes down, the towns will just wash their hands of it, because it's, it's a lot of work. And then have to go through and then figure out. All the costs and then pay back the owner who you probably couldn't find in the first place, you know, there's just, there's all this. Stuff and it will just be easier to just take your liens and just sell them to somebody else and let them deal with it. I suspect if they strike it down, that's what you'll see happen, that's what they do in a lot of other states across the south, and every once in a while here in Maine, we get a call from. Some company that doesn't really understand how we do it around here, and they call and they say, when are you putting your liens out for sale, it's like, we don't do that here. But that's what they're looking for, you know, they buy them, you know.
Cheap, fifty cents on the dollar.
Right, and then they go after them, just like a credit card debt collector, they'll, they'll file liens, they'll call you, they'll try to take you to court, you know, they'll do all that, all that stuff, which we don't do now. So the process may change a lot. See.
Isn't that kind of, I mean, if they do that, isn't it unconstitutional, it seems like that somebody's gonna still go profit, I mean, uh.
Well, no, they would, in, in theory, they would. They would. They would get the fees which they can uh generate, so these, these companies, they get to add all of their costs in there, so all of the man-hours they spend, they can then collect all that, just like we would be able to under that. If we had to do a return, we would have to keep track of. All of our office hours that we spent, you know, digging through these parts so that we could recoup all our costs, and and those companies will do that easily, because they have. You know, like the debt collector, they have a database, every time they call you, they're gonna charge, you know, five minutes of. Hourly rate to do that, and a- a- all those costs can be justified, so that's how they kinda make their monies. Is on the fees that they charge on the collection process.
Maybe others not state action. You know. They might be able to get away with it.
Yeah. Well, and they may not even get the total amount of tax due.
Yeah.
Because we would sell our interest in those liens for, you know, maybe a third of what they owe in taxes to get something, and then they're gonna try to. Gain as much of that extra as they can, they get to eat it, so that's the incentive on this. It's like a, like any other debt collector.
Uh. I'd, I'd like more reports.
Apparently, there's going to be a uh, a, a drying out of all the dock pieces on NMS Cut Lake. And if, if you're missing any dock pieces, uh apparently Chief Roy might have them in his backyard.
Dan found Chief.
Oh, am I now? On the dam right now.
I'm there for a few days, I wondered whose it was, and nobody come forward, and then yesterday, by chance. You mentioned what it was, and I said, boy, I think that's sitting on the dam right now.
How's the condition?
Not bad, only one broken board.
There you go.
Luckily, he claimed it when he did, because it was gonna be repurposed.
Well, something related to you is uh, we got this thing from uh. Uh, Frank Hickman on the uh. Hooper business, and uh. And I don't know, of course, I, with their uh, the loss of all their uh equipment in that shed. Uh, they probably lost the, yeah.
Yeah.
The cannons aren't in there?
They didn't lose a gun. Well, anyway.
They stored those safely in the back and shed.
So uh. Well, have you heard anything further? Other than. What we heard from uh. Uh, Matt. The guy, the pilot.
Uh, nothing new to report. Compared to what I reported meeting before last, which is the state has established standards that are published on their website. Um, those would be enforceable presumably by the Department of Agriculture. Um, those, those standards would be, they're a lot more specific than nothing. Um, but nonetheless, we still need to encourage the Department of Agriculture to enforce them. And um, and it's kind of a wait and see, so. To step forward, at least we've got standards now. Uh, whether or not the Department of Agriculture is going to be. Vocal in enforcing them has yet to be seen. Uh, and there was some back and forth, uh, terms of, they, they, they made a. Just, just so you know, the, the, the process. Senator Hickman put in a bill that sounded pretty onerous to the department, so they published some very weak standards. And Senator Hickman said, that's not good enough, try again, and so they did some negotiations behind the scenes with the. Statewide Apple Growers Association, and they came up with the standards that are now published, so that was kind of the second offer that we got. From those folks, and that's uh, at, at that point, that's when Senator Hickman said, okay. I'll withdraw my bill, and uh, as long as you keep those standards there, you, you won't hear from me. Which ultimately is one of the things that folks on Norris Hill ask for. Um, whether or not they have teeth and are enforceable and make a big difference is a whole nother question. But we'll see. Thank you. Uh, well, while I'm at it, I just wanted to let you know, um. We had a very good public hearing on. Uh, the local recycling. Uh, bill. And I went not only to the public hearing, but also to. The work session afterwards, and thanks to the support of Maine Municipal. And some uh friendly uh representatives and senators, uh. We got a positive report out of committee. Uh, on a bill that would. Allow. Municipalities that. Publish a written safety standard and enforce it. To not have any liability should someone be injured in the process of recycling. Which would mean that. If a municipality such as Monmouth wanted to say the rules are. No climbing into dumpsters and no climbing on piles, um, then we would be. Held harmless by the law if someone were injured in the process of doing that, so. Uh, as a board, we could make the decision to allow that without inviting any legal liability.
MMA insurance is false, that was.
MMA came through in part thanks to Justin and his quiet. Support behind the scenes, and um. There's still a few hoops that we need to jump through, I mean, it's, it's still just a bill, it needs to be voted on by both chambers, and we need to persuade the governor to sign it. Uh, before it becomes law, but that's the content of the bill as it stands, and uh. We'll see, I gotta go back up there for probably one more visit to see. Um. When it's gonna be. Considered by both bodies, Senate and the House of Representatives.
Right. And nothing, uh, there's a lady over there. Debbie Simmons.
Darcy.
Darcy. Darcy's, who has, we got this letter from uh Steve O'Donnell. Uh, wanting us to do something about the. Uh, uh, what uh the planning board have to go through and uh, and, and uh. He will be doing this, uh, doing, taking on this job that uh, the planning board, but doing something that they need desperately. Uh. And she is uh. Related to uh, one of the planning board members, Ray Simon.
And she's graciously agreed to do your minutes too, so I won't have to, that's a good thing.
Well, you were doing a great job.
Current sweep for the point.
Yeah.
We want.
And I told her that too, that you don't like the, you know, the, the dialogue type minutes that they can be pretty, pretty concise.
Action. You guys must have to tell me how much detail you want, I'm, I'll give it to you all. And you can just edit it and say, no, we don't need that, we don't need that, we don't need that, but I'd rather give you more than what you, what you might ask for.
We, we, I think we do, like, uh, there was an old TV show called Dragnet.
Just the facts.
Yeah. Joe Friday, Sergeant Friday, who would always say, just the facts, ma'am. He was nothing.
Yeah. The fact, yeah.
And I'll, I'll always say, uh, like, who, who made the motion so that you, you know, you know who said, uh. Who made it noon seconds and all that stuff?
He always repeats it, so if you do decide you wanna do some of this by Zoom, it's just easier sometimes to have him, you know, kinda repeat who said it, because you sometimes can't see that face or. Whatever. Right.
So then, public comment?
I know, I'm standing, I guess I am, okay, I'll stand, I won't stand, I'll sit. Uh, I'm speaking uh for the Cogwell and Trailblazers, actually, and I wanted to publicly thank Dan. Because we did our adopt a highway, our adopt the road, whatever, adopt the highway, thank you, on Main Street. And uh, Dan was, after my harassing him, was very helpful. Fresh bands and everything, we had eighteen people in attendance, I only made the phone call, but Dan, I didn't help, but I know you helped gather stuff, so there were eighteen people. Having bags of garbage and transgressions, and we wanted to thank him. For the assistance in helping us get that done for the town, and then on a more positive note, Trailblazers are doing a swap meet fundraiser on the twenty-first of May.
For your minutes.
Yes. And we would certainly like any, any public to attend, and that money will, that is raised from that will help with snowmobile trails, as well as going to the Scholarship Fund.
It's called a swap.
Swap meet.
Swap meet.
Swap meet.
For all those people who. For all those people who can't have garage sales because you're on dirt roads, you can bring all your stuff here and have a garage sale here.
Are you doing it at the fairgrounds or in front of?
At the fair.
Yeah. Yes, it comes to dark. I should call it that knowing. But the hard part is most people don't know it by that. So. Yeah, exactly.
And when is it?
May twenty first. Five AM to two PM.
That's the day.
People that come normally to do swap meets like to get there at five o'clock and sit tables up.
Yeah.
And then usually. Slam bam by two o'clock to pack it up.
The weekend of the May Fair, so.
Yes, that's on the Saturday.
Pass people back and forth between the two places.
And anything that didn't sell on the May Fair.
I used to clean up Academy Road. From the school. All the way up to thirty two and. With a couple barrels and wagon and do it myself. And, and Nancy, and I started doing it during, I don't know, twenty years ago, maybe. But it's become a, much more difficult as I've gotten. Less able to. Maneuver. And I, I don't know if anybody, any group around that needs to.
You want to talk to Fur.
Yeah.
He's the one that does it. Get the organizations up and where the train station is to get the designs back.
All listed right there for TV.
Yeah, I know.
Trailblazers did Main Street. Lions Club does. Cobbe See, I think. They do Cobbe See.
They still do it.
Yep, they're still doing it.
The schools, the schools has been doing Academy.
Yes, the school now does Academy. We got. I forget what the group is called, though, that we got to do it. Future Leaders of America or something like that.
They do, they do here. They do.
Yeah, they, they, last year they did. All, all of Academy.
Yeah.
Yeah, Norris Hill down to the exact number.
Pretty sure that was in September, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, they went down this route.
No, they went this way.
Both ways on Academy than Norris Hill.
Yeah, it was during data caring. Like, I'm in the middle school did. Some of it later in beginning of October.
Thank you.
Sounds like Ross will hook up.
I didn't, I never saw them do it.
And we left the bags right on the trombone.
Then on to public comment. Oh, we got.
The communication with the. Mission.
Conservation.
The Conservation Commission. So we've talked with a couple of people on that and we're trying to develop a floor and relations with Trailblazers. We have forty plus miles of recreational trail also. With the thing where the larger recreational trail folks in the community. Looking and being progressive and open minded and looking to the future. We believe that it's not only in ourselves that. The trails is just going to be multi-use. Look at, that's the future. It's going to be. Harder to make happen, easier, easier to run than done. But we're trying to talk and learn about what other interests are out there. And my commission seems to be. You know, another entity that we should become, perform a relationship with. So with that said, we talked a few months ago about property acquisition. I think I said it here before, but I'll say it again. Wherever this goes down the road and if somebody buys them. Believe to sell the property off or we keep it amongst the selectmen. We would hope that we would be on the radar for any properties that we have existing trails on. So we're made aware of. We may have suggestions for the land or please for the land or something that just, it's just so much work and. The town is shrinking is really the point here. The check award keeps getting divided into more check awards. Which makes a lot of land or relations, time and commitment and. We really have to stay on top of our game, keeping all these trails open and available. Thank you.
Have you talked to somebody?
We've talked to no one friends and Mark Dories, who are both very active on the. And we have actually had Mike come visit us at a meeting and speak with us and give us a little. Preliminary blurb or view of the commission and. You like to talk about the open space. What you learned about that would vary. And we know there's a lot more to learn and a lot more. Meetings and conversations to have, so we're just. Picking our toe in the water with this.
I actually want to write something that we, for us to. Agree to, I think, right?
You would eventually have to go to the. The townspeople, right? Yeah, but yeah, like almost like an add, I guess. In the end, it could potentially be like an addendum to the comprehensive plan or. Something like that, but they want to do it separately so it doesn't get bogged down in the. Plan. Process.
Someone might consider either from the Conservation Commission, Commission or the Trailblazers might consider writing a letter to the editor about. One of the articles coming up for the June vote. Which technically sounds like it's about economic development, but really what it is. Is a re. Framing of the TIP. That we have in town. So it's a change of some of the language there. That allows the town. Some more flexibility, actually allows the select board. Some more flexibility in how the TIP monies are allocated. The number one thing on the list when we surveyed people last year. Was about. Encouraging more multi-use trails. And that is in. The language that's behind that. Article being considered by the voters. So a small step in the right direction.
Another public comment.
Actually, before we move on, I've got one and I would, I know there, there are folks here from the Recreation Committee, Commission Committee. And I saw posted by Joe Fletcher. Recently that there's going to be a pickleball tournament.
Yes.
You want to tell us more?
So all ages welcomed. It's gonna be at the high school. On the June twenty fifth. And really, it's just a fun thing. There's, there's no cover charge at school, letting us borrow the equipment. Really, we're just trying to get out there to see what other. Things we can offer. So pickleball is like a huge success. Then maybe we can do these tournaments often. Or do something around it. We are getting the pickleball. Equipment for Outback. Up here, so we have that here. So right now, we're really just trying to see. Are people interested in this? Is this something that we can continue to do? So really, Joe Fletcher and Joe Menace are. The ones that kind of put this all together and I just got voluntold to be there, so.
It's a big hit and with the, every morning you see.
Yeah, and that's what Joe and Joe said. So we were trying to bring some of that stuff here. So right now we have. Four. Four teams signed up, so hopefully we can get some more. So we'll keep forcing it.
Well, so the thing is, you know. I didn't know about this because I don't spend time on Facebook. So I think doing posters and putting it. You know, having something at the library or having something at the. Post office because she'll let you put stuff at the post office and.
Yeah, I think Joe was working on getting the actual paper. Fires out.
I mean, it just needs to be there because. People are returning from Florida that don't spend time on Facebook and play pickleball when they're there and might want to play up here. You know, and Facebook isn't the only media out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So maybe, when did you say it was?
June twenty fifth.
So maybe that could go in our. Newsletter or meeting summary. I was also contacted by Keith Peters.
Okay.
Who. Requested more information so he could put some free advertising in the community advertiser.
Okay, I will. I can reach out.
Yeah. Just send him whatever language you want. He'll magically make it happen.
Perfect. That's perfect.
And by the way, I have, I have a. Personal eighty-four year old family member who's very interested. Twenty eighty-four plus bracket.
Yeah, we're hoping for it to be a pretty.
And on to consider a catering permit from Lilac Mixology and catering.
I make a motion, we need a food briefing permit for Lilac Mixology and catering.
Well, Chris has made a motion and Joe has seconded it to. Prove or consider or approve a. Catering permit from Lilac Mixology and catering. All those in favor? Thank you. And next is to consider the. Request for proposal for property tax reevaluation services.
So I drafted this, like you requested at the, at the last meeting. It's. A lot of, a lot of these RFPs for these services are pretty boilerplate. Maine Revenue made a template back twenty years ago and it's been, you know, edited for. Technology changes, but it's the same, same one you see everywhere. I just edited it for our timeline and. Make it the way I wanted to see it. Do you have any questions on that?
Do you need a motion?
Yes. Just as long as the dates are okay with everybody. We'll see what we get for response. We may have to do this a couple of times, but as long as that, because there's not that many people doing this work.
Refresh my memory on the dates.
So we put it out. And we have, it would be due back on Wednesday, June thirteenth. With hopefully negotiating an award early in July. If you do get multiple. Hitters, typically you'd bring in one or two to interview. If they, they, you do a reval, they technically work for you as the board, not for Donna, so. But you'll want to pick somebody that you're kind of comfortable with. Obviously, Donna will work with them, but. You're the. You're the person they work for. People.
I make a motion, we. Host the RFP for Property Tax Revaluation Services.
The motion I can't second by. By Mark to. Approve the RFP for Property Tax Revaluation Services. All those in favor? Thank you. And next is Warren.
Bluework. Blue rock earthworks, materials transport, twenty-six hundred dollars. Business management systems, the software for the code enforcement office, two thousand one hundred forty-five. Constellation Energy, this is the energy supplier. They no longer build through the CMP bills. They come on their own. So that's what this is, one thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. We truck refrigeration services, vehicle repairs and maintenance, one thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars. Inabek Valley Humane Society, one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five. Maine Equalization Consultants, Donna's fee, two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Maine Municipal Association, six months on our property and casualty pool, twenty-four thousand three hundred eighty-seven. Maine Waste Energy. Kipping fees, four thousand two hundred and twenty-one. Mission Square Retirement for Town Employees, two thousand nine hundred and nine. Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust. Health Insurance, twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-six. On the Sanitary District, one thousand four hundred and fifty. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, various repairs and maintenance to the fire truck. Quirk Auto Group, three thousand five hundred and seventy. That's the fix for. Works and some other things, but mostly that. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles. Sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-seven for grand total of one hundred thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-two cents.
I make a motion, we accept. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three warrant number twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Kent, second by Chris to approve. Warrant number twenty-two for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. All those in favor? You had a question. Yeah. I added up all the stuff from CMP. And I ended up all the stuff from. Consolidation. Constellation. New Energy. And it comes out to. Four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. This is a monthly.
No, so these, so what happened was is. Constellation Energy informed central main power. They didn't want them to process their invoices anymore. So it took about four months for them to stop showing up. On both. So I was getting Constellation bills. And we were still paying them through CMP. So occasionally. We'd get a credit on the Constellation bill. They didn't make any sense. So what I did is I waited until they stopped showing up on the CMP bills altogether. And then we owed two or three months worth of Constellation of the, of the supply charge. So that's, that's why. Supply charge is so high this month. You may see that again. Next month because there's. There's all these. Sometimes they were getting credited through CMP. Sometimes they weren't. It was a mess when they split it out. So. I didn't pay. The supplier at all until. It stopped showing up on all of the CMP bills.
We're always going to get. The two, and we're always going to be, well, the CMP, just the CMP is eighteen. Eight, eight, one thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars, almost two thousand dollars. Invested for our. Our. Delivery and the. Electricity.
Maybe, I, I probably would not use. It could be true, but I, I wouldn't use this month as an example because I, I was, I was really getting frustrated with getting two bills for the same building. And some of the credits were coming through and some weren't. It was, so I just stopped paying them all together until they, I called them and said, you guys. You both need to get your act together or. And so, so once it. Once it cleared up, so some of this could be, you know, there could be some duplicates, this credit all over these things and. I'm gonna have to watch them the next month or two to make sure they all flush out. But there are several months of supply charges. In here. On some of those bills, it could be up to four months with. Stuff that I didn't pay because it didn't make sense. I had been watching them in the months leading up to this and they were significantly low. They were really low. The math didn't, you know, it was only like we were paying twelve hundred bucks for electricity. Right. It was really cheap. Because I was only paying the delivery charges from CMP, not the supply. Because they didn't make sense. They were showing up, you know, I'd get, they, they all showed up kind of the same time of month and I'd have. Town Hall Supply and then on the CMP bill, it would say delivery and supply and the supply would match this bill. From Constellation and it would still be on the CMP bill. I was like, which one am I supposed to be? Who do I pay? Yeah, so it's, it's a mess, but it's flushed out now, so hopefully it'll.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.